Thank you, and good morning to everyone. Good morning, Philadelphia. Before we begin the council session today, I want to make a couple of announcements. Due to the continuing threat to the public health from COVID-19, in particular the Delta variant, city council is currently meeting remotely. We are using Microsoft Teams to make this remote meeting possible. Instructions for how the public, I'm sorry, may view the meeting and offer public comment are included in the stated meeting notice that was published in the Daily News Inquirer and the Legal Intelligence prior to the meeting, and can also be found on PHLcouncil.com. Now note that the hour has come. Clerk will please call the roll to take attendance and members, just say a couple of words to make sure that your image is displayed on the screen. Mr. Decker, please call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass?
Good morning, Mr. President, colleagues in the city of Philadelphia.
Good morning.
Councilwoman Brooks?
Good morning, Council President, colleagues in the city of Philadelphia.
Good morning.
Councilman Dom?
Good morning, Council President, colleagues in Philadelphia.
Good morning.
Councilwoman Gaultier?
Good morning, Council President, colleagues into the city of Philadelphia. Present.
Good morning.
Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson?
Good morning, Council President. Good morning, colleagues.
Good morning.
Councilman Green?
Good morning, Council President. Good morning, colleagues. Reflecting on the one-year anniversary of the tragic death of Walter Wallace Jr.
Good morning.
Councilwoman Gimm?
Good morning, Council President. Good morning, colleagues. I am present.
Good morning.
Councilman Johnson?
Good morning, Council President. Good morning, colleagues. Prayers go out to all the families who have lost loved ones too since this gun violence.
Good morning, Council.
Councilman Jones?
Good morning, Council President. Good morning, colleagues. And William Penn, 339 years ago, established Philadelphia from the Lenape Indians. Happy birthday, Philadelphia.
Good morning. Thank you, Council.
Councilman O?
Good morning, Council President. Good morning, colleagues. I'm present.
Good morning.
Councilman O'Neil?
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Councilwoman Parker?
Good morning, Mr. President, colleagues into the people of Philadelphia.
Good morning.
Councilwoman Quinona Sanchez?
Good morning, Buenos dias, and thank you to Reverend Hester for joining us this morning. Good morning, colleagues.
Good morning.
Councilman Scola?
Good morning, Council President, colleagues. Present.
Good morning.
Councilman Thomas?
Good morning, Council colleagues. Good morning, Council President and present.
Good morning.
Council President Clark?
And good morning to all. We have cleared your Sabbath's quorum. So we're going to get started. To give our invocation this morning, the chair recognizes the Reverend Dr. Clarence Hester of the E. Avenue Baptist Church. He appeared today as a guest of Councilwoman Quinona Sanchez. Clearly a good friend of us all. Reverend, thank you so much for being here.
You're welcome.
More importantly, being there for the community across the city of Philadelphia. I would ask all members and guests, please bow your head for the invocation.
Give an honor to God, to you, Mr. President, and to the members of this council. We thank God and Councilmember Maria Quinona Sanchez for this august honor and privilege to come before this prestigious body of servants and lift you up to an almighty God. Let us pray, Almighty and everlasting God, in these unprecedented times of uncertainty that we find ourselves living in, we come pause and in this moment to reverence your name and to lift you up in the spirit of prayer, that these deliberations may be consumed by your love. We pray that your countenance may shine upon this council and bless them with your guidance, that while our nation is confronted with the COVID pandemic and surmounting violence, economic turbulence, and cyber warfare, and disturbing sounds of chemical warfare in foreign places, we implore you to look down on this city and this council with mercy, and that their understanding may be enlightened by your wisdom. We pray that you sanctify their thoughts and intentions, even their words and their actions, that all that they speak and do will abound to the honor and glory of you and the well-being of our great city. Lord, look down on our mayor, our managing director, and this council, and all the families that have lost loved ones. And Lord, just help us to work together to face the serious facts of our times and to find the courage to meet them justly with wisdom, discipline, and resourcefulness. Grant to all of us an unwavering faith in the absolute necessity of inward life and the efficacy of dedicated intelligence and the power of an active, even sacrificial goodwill. Even now, Lord, help them to seek guidance in all their worthy pursuits and ever widen opportunities for continuing service to you and the people of Philadelphia. Grant unto this council the victory of faith on the ideals to which we are committed to as a city. Grant our city peace, resources, and provision, as you provide this body with strength and spiritual substance for performing with great might the task with which our common lives yet confront us with. May the deep occurrence of faith, service, and courage and sacrifice be a power within us to do the things we ought and to extend the boundaries of a full and enlightened life for all. Even now, Lord, use this body as instruments of your glory to enhance service and the quality of life for all the residents of this great city. This we pray, as you bless this assembly in the precious name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen. Thank you so much, Reverend. We really appreciate your invocation this morning.
You're more than welcome.
Okay, our next order of business is the approval of the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, October 21, 2021. And the chair recognizes Councilman Scola.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the Journal for the meeting Thursday, October 21, 2021. Be approved. Thank you.
Thank you. It has been moved improperly. Second, that the Journal of the Meeting on Thursday, October 21, 2021 stand approved. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, ayes have it, and our Journal is approved. And our next order of business is request for leave of absence. And the chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of the members of council, there's one request for a leave of absence from Councilmember Heenan.
Chair, thanks to Councilwoman. Leave shall be granted to Councilman Heenan. We will now recognize Councilwoman Parker for motion concerning certain legislative matters that may arise during the course of today's session of council, and that were not listed on the calendar circulated prior to today's session. Councilwoman Parker?
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that any of the following matters, if considered today, may be added to the agenda for this session of council, and as required by law, subsequently published on an amended agenda after the consideration of those matters, resolutions authorizing hearings, amendments to bills on first reading, the reconsideration of a bill vetoed by or recalled from the mayor, resolutions taking substantive action to be voted on in this session, a motion to withdraw a bill or resolution that is not on the calendar, and a motion placing a bill or resolution on or returning a bill or resolution from the suspension calendar that is not listed on today's calendar. The purpose of this motion is to provide the public with notice concerning possible actions by council that arose too late to be included on the calendar that was published prior to today's session.
Second.
Thank you. It has been moved improperly. Second, that the legislative matters stated by Councilwoman Parker may be added to the agenda for today, should those matters arise during the course of this session of council. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, ayes have it, motion carries. Thank you very much. And our next order of business is communication. I will ask the clerk to please read the messages from the mayor and any other communications that he may have in his possession.
From the mayor to the president and members of the council of the city of Philadelphia, pursuant to sections 4, 604, and 2307 of the Home World Charter, and today transmitted to the council, the recommendation of the City Planning Commission on the following bills, bill numbers 210638, 210667, 210668, 210686, 210687, 210741, 210742, 210744, 210778, 210801, 210807, and 210808.
And I am pleased to advise you that on October 20, 2021, I signed the following bills, which were passed by council at its session on October 14, 2021, bill numbers 210681, 210682, and 210684, and that on October 27, 2021, I signed the following bills, which were passed by council at its session on October 14, 2021, bill numbers 210635 and 210636A.
And I am transmitting for the consideration of your honorable body, a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 2505 Emerald Street located in the First Councilmanic District, and a resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority, deeds conveying fee simple title to certain city on lots of pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements there on situated in the Fourth Councilmanic District of the city of Philadelphia, and further authorizing the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority to transfer to the Philadelphia Land Bank fee simple title to such properties, and a resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority, deeds conveying fee simple title to certain city on lots of pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements there on situated in the Fifth Councilmanic District of the city of Philadelphia, and further authorizing the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority to transfer to the Philadelphia Land Bank fee simple title to such properties, and a resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority, deeds conveying fee simple title to 167 East Lippincott Street, 508 East Cambria Street, and 3217 Shelbourne Street in the Seventh Councilmanic District of the city of Philadelphia, and an ordinance amending Chapter 122900 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Contractor Parking to revise the requirements and limitations related to contractor parking permits, and an ordinance authorizing transfers and appropriations for fiscal year 2022 from the General Fund, the Water Fund, and the Grants Revenue Fund, certain all city offices, departments, boards, and commissions, to the General Fund and the Water Fund, certain all city offices, departments, boards, and commissions, and an ordinance authorizing transfers and appropriations for fiscal year 2021 from the General Fund, the Grants Revenue Fund, the Water Fund, and the Aviation Fund, certain all city offices, departments, boards, and commissions, to the General Fund, the Water Fund, and the Aviation Fund, certain all city offices, departments, boards, and commissions, all under certain terms and conditions.
Thank you, Mr. Decker. Appreciate that. Our next order of business will be the introduction of bills and resolutions. And by way of a reminder, we are asking that all resolutions, including privileged resolutions, be placed on the filed passes calendar for our next session of council unless they are being referred to committee. In our current remote environment, this procedure will provide the appropriate opportunity for public comment. I want to thank you in advance for your anticipated cooperation. Mr. Decker, please read the titles of the legislation that's being offered today by the members.
Yes, Mr. President. Councilwoman Parker offers one bill and three resolutions. On behalf of Council President Clark, Councilwoman Parker offers an ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain portions of land located within an area bounded by Burke Street, Memford Street, Wilt Street, and Tulip Street.
For the committee?
On her own behalf, Councilwoman Parker offers a resolution celebrating the Diamond Jubilee 75th anniversary of The Lynx Incorporated.
Next week's calendar?
And a resolution honoring the Oak Lane Youth Association on the special occasion of its 50th anniversary.
Next week's calendar.
And a resolution congratulating Sonia Sanchez on winning the Dorothy and Lilian Gish Prize, one of the country's most prestigious and generous arts honors.
Next week's calendar?
Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson offers one bill entitled an ordinance amending section 17111 entitled Energy Efficiency and Environmental Design and Construction of Buildings to update requirements and make technical changes.
For the committee?
Councilman Jones offers three resolutions entitled a resolution also naming the 2400 block of West Indiana Avenue as Reverend Dr. A. W. Doc Way in honor of Reverend Dr. Albert Wilson Doc to commemorate his legacy as a preacher, teacher, and evangelist.
Next week's calendar?
And a resolution also naming the 4300 block of Tower Street as Josie D. Heard A. M. E. C. Way in honor of Josie D. Heard to commemorate her legacy as an educator, author, hymnist, and as the namesake of the Josie D. Heard African Methodist Episcopal Church in the Maniak Neighborhood of Philadelphia.
Next week's calendar?
And a resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority, deeds conveying fee simple title to 3119 North 35th Street in the Fourth Councilmanic District.
Next week's calendar?
Councilwoman Sanchez offers one bill and one resolution entitled an ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Huntington Street, Howard Street, Sasquatch Avenue, American Street, Jefferson Street, and Sixth Street.
For the committee?
And a resolution appointing Maria Gonzalez to the Board of Directors of the Philadelphia Land Bank.
Next week's calendar?
Councilman Green offers one bill and two resolutions entitled an ordinance amending subsection 192604 subparagraph 6 of the Philadelphia Code, credit for contributions to community development corporations, nonprofit organizations engaged in developing and implementing healthy food initiatives, and nonprofit intermediaries. To clarify, the number of contribution agreements that may be entered into.
For the committee?
And a resolution recognizing November as epilepsy awareness month.
Next week's calendar?
And a resolution recognizing and celebrating Women's Community Revitalization Project on the 35th anniversary of the organization's incorporation.
Next week's calendar?
Councilwoman Gaultier offers a resolution memorializing and honoring the life of the late Walter Wallace Jr. and recognizing the adoption of police reforms inspired by his death and the activism in his name.
Next week's calendar? Council, did you want to re-recognize? I'm sorry.
I did. Thank you so much, Council President. Good morning, everyone. I wanted to take a moment today to talk about the resolution I'm introducing honoring the life of the late Walter Wallace Jr. and his legacy here in the city of Philadelphia. Tuesday marked the one-year anniversary of Walter's death. It feels unbelievable that so much time has gone by. The pain of Walter's killing and the aftermath is still very visceral. I first want to acknowledge the Wallace family, Walter's mother and father, his wife Dominique, and his nine children. No family should ever have to experience what they've been through, and no amount of reform that the city enacts in response to Walter's death will ever fill the hole that's been created for them. Speaking personally, I'll never forget the shock I felt when I learned the news of his death, as my colleagues and I sat in a hearing about police oversight efforts. The horror of watching the video footage of seeing Walter's family and neighbors pleading for restraint in the mere seconds that police were on the scene before gunshots rang out, the demonstrations and the unrest in the wake of Walter's death, and Philadelphians passionate outcries and demands for change. As we all know, just a few months earlier in Minneapolis, George Floyd's murder at the hands of police reignited a civil rights movement that's been going on for centuries in this country, for the state to value black lives and for law enforcement to stop treating black bodies as dispensable. And tragically, Walter's subsequent death made it crystal clear that George Floyd's death isn't just about George Floyd. It's also about black people here in Philadelphia who many times feel endangered instead of protected by police. And it's about all the deep wounds that still exist around racial injustice in this country, but also here in this city, leading back to its earliest days. Walter's untimely death will leave a permanent mark on Philadelphia, as it should, and I hope that mark leads us towards change and toward a system where equity and justice are present from top to bottom. Because if there were equity and justice in our system, we wouldn't have police responding to mental health calls. And the reality is that we need loving, supportive systems in this city. We need to drastically alter the way we treat people and how we care for people, not just with regards to policing, and not just in times of crisis, but from birth, and with every point of contact we have with every Philadelphian from that moment on. The city has taken some important steps in this direction in the months since Walter's death. All patrol officers will be outfitted with tasers, providing them with a non-lethal means of self-defense, while also reducing the risk of casualties. The city has accelerated its 911 dispatcher crisis intervention training work and reintroduced the co-responder pilot program, which pairs law enforcement and behavioral health specialists to intervene and respond to behavioral health-related calls. And money in the FY22 budget is funding the expansion of mobile crisis units that can respond to situations involving mental health crises without the police. We need to go much, much further to ultimately provide supportive crisis response, and more than that, to nurture supportive communities that all Philadelphians, regardless of your race, your income, or your zip code, deserve to be born into. And to my elected colleagues, let us all continue to work towards a future where young black men like Walter are protected and loved, not just by their families, but by our city too. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Councilwoman. That will be referred to next week. We will take a vote. Mr. Decker?
Councilman Thomas offers two resolutions entitled a resolution authorizing the Committee on Global Opportunities and Creative Innovative Economy to hold hearings to receive the report of the Arts and Culture Task Force formed by the committee to learn about its findings and the actions thus far taken, and to review the impact of this work on the vital arts and culture sector of the city of Philadelphia.
This week's calendar?
And a resolution honoring and congratulating Philadelphia native Kalia Copper as the champion of the week for being named WNBA Finals MVP and winning the WNBA title.
That will be on next week's calendar.
Councilman O'Neil offers one bill entitled an ordinance amending section 14514 of the Philadelphia Code entitled FNE Far Northeast Overlay District to prohibit eligibility for floor area, height, and dwelling unit bonuses, and to increase minimum parking requirements.
For the committee?
Councilman Scola offers five bills and one resolution, entitled an ordinance adding new subsections to section 12102, 12906.2, and 12914 of the Philadelphia Code, allowing for the establishment of programs by regulation for use of loading, zone parking spaces, and metered parking spaces in innovative ways, and an ordinance amending Chapter 122700 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Permit Parking Districts by amending the boundaries for Permit Parking District 19, and an ordinance amending Chapter 94900 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Prohibition on the Use of Certain Bags by Retail Establishments to further define the term "single-use plastic bag" and add reporting provisions, and an ordinance amending section 14525 of the Philadelphia Code entitled S&amp;M South Ninth Street Market Overlay District to clarify existing provisions, and an ordinance amending Chapter 10400 of the Philadelphia Code Noise and Excessive Vibration to establish a prohibition on loud noise emanating from a motor vehicle, and to add a section authorizing use of an automated system for determining violations of that prohibition.
Those five bills will be referred to the appropriate committees?
And a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 2505 Emerald Street located in the First Councilmanic District.
Next week's calendar?
Councilman O offers five resolutions, entitled a resolution authorizing the life and legacy of Colin L. Powell for his exemplary and outstanding service to the United States as a trailblazing military general, statesman, and public servant.
Next week's calendar?
And a resolution recognizing October 2021 as Down Syndrome Awareness Month in the city of Philadelphia.
Next week's calendar?
And a resolution designating October 1st as Latin American Entrepreneur Day in recognition of the successful Latin America Thrives in Philadelphia event.
Next week's calendar?
And a resolution recognizing, congratulating, and thanking the United States Marine Corps on the occasion of its 246th anniversary.
Next week's calendar?
And a resolution recognizing the Ukrainian Federation of America on the occasion of its 30th anniversary.
Next week's calendar?
There are no other bills or resolutions being offered today by the members, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Mr. Decker. That concludes our introduction of bills and resolutions, and our next order of business is reports on committee. And the chair recognizes Councilman Johnson for report from the committee on rules.
Thank you, Council President.
You're welcome.
Council President, I move that the rules of council be suspended as to permit first reading this day of bills number 210549, 210634, 210637, 210638.
Council, pardon me. I apologize, Councilmember Johnson. If it's all right, can you request that the rules report out the bills? Thank you, Councilmember Johnson.
Thank you very much. Council President, the Committee on Rules reports out 10 bills with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Mr. Decker, please report. Mr. Decker, you are mute?
Apologies, Mr. President.
No problem.
To the President and members of the Council of the City of Philadelphia, the Committee on Rules to which is referred bill number 210549, entitled an ordinance approving an amendment to the Articles of the Corporation of the City Avenue Special Services of District of Philadelphia and Lower Marion to extend the term of existence of the district to December 31, 2042, and bill number 210634 entitled an ordinance to amend the master plan for the University of Pennsylvania by areas of land located within an area bounded by Guardian Drive, East Service Drive, Civic Center Boulevard, 34th Street, 33rd Street, Walnut Street, the Schuylkill River, 34th Street, and University Avenue. And bill number 210637 entitled an ordinance amending Title 14 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Zoning and Planning by amending certain provisions of Chapter 14800 entitled Parking and Loading, pertaining to parking requirements for uses in historically designated properties. And bill number 210638 entitled an ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by 11th Street, Reed Street, 12th Street, and Wharton Street, to amend Title 14 of the Philadelphia Code by adding section 14531 entitled SMH South Philadelphia Municipal Hub Overlay District, and making other related changes, and approving the residential mixed-use-two District RMX-2 master plan for the site generally bounded by 11th Street, Reed Street, 12th Street, and Wharton Street. And bill number 210667 entitled an ordinance amending section 14529 of the Philadelphia Code entitled BDO Fifth District Overlay District to prohibit certain bonuses. And bill number 210668 entitled an ordinance amending section 14504 of the Philadelphia Code entitled NCO Neighborhood Conservation Overlay District by expanding the existing Strawberry Mansion NCO area to include an area bounded by Lehigh Avenue, 29th Street, and Sedgley Avenue. And bill number 210687 entitled an ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Trenton Avenue, Cambria Street, Tulip Street, and Williams Street. And bill number 210742 entitled an ordinance amending section 14502 of the Philadelphia Code entitled CTR Center City Overlay District by amending certain height regulations and creating bulk and massing controls within the Benjamin Franklin Parkway area. And bill number 210778 entitled an ordinance to amend Title 14 of the Philadelphia Code by adding section 14532 entitled the AHP Affordable Housing Preservation Overlay District, and making other related changes, to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by 39th Street, Ludlow Street, 40th Street, and Market Street, and to establish a temporary demolition moratorium with respect to properties within the aforementioned area. And bill number 210808 entitled an ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land within an area bounded by Oxford Avenue, Schelmeyer Avenue, Rising Sun Avenue Extended, Sully Avenue Extended, the County Line, Borbeck Avenue, Hasbrook Avenue, and Hartel Avenue. Respectfully reports that as considered the same, and returns the attached bills to council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Decker. Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of bills number 210549, 210634, 210637, 210638, 210667, 210668, 210687, 210742, 210778, and 210808.
Second.
Thank you. This time, the chair recognizes Councilwoman Gaultier.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that council- I move that Councilman Johnson's motion be amended to remove my bill, Bill Number 210778, from his motion so as to permit first reading of Bill Number 210778 at the next session of council instead of today. Second.
Thank you. It has been moved in properly, second, that the Councilman Johnson's motion be amended to remove Bill Number 210778 from that motion. All those in favor will say aye?
Aye.
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 Those opposed, ayes have it, and Bill Number 210778 will be removed from the motion. The chair again recognizes Councilman Johnson for the motion as amended.
My second, Council President.
Councilman, if you, I know we did a last-minute change in script.
Yes.
Yeah, if it wasn't sent over to you.
On behalf of Councilmember Johnson, Mr. President, I move that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of bills numbers 210549, 210634, 210637, 210638, 210667, 210668, 210687, 210742, and 210808. Second.
Thank you. It has been moved in properly, second, that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit the first reading this day of bills number 210549, 210634, 210637, 210638, 210667, 210668, 210687, 210742, and 210808. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, ayes have it, these bills will be placed on our first reading calendar for today, and Bill Number 210778 will be placed on the first reading calendar for the next session of council. Apologies to you, Councilman Johnson, for that change in the procedure not being forwarded to you in the appropriate time.
Just for the record, Council President, I did receive it late last night from Wendy. I just was a mishap on my behalf, just trying to review it. But thank you, Madam Leader, as well, and thank you, colleagues, for your patience.
Thank you, Councilman. I love an honest politician. Now, the chair now recognizes Councilman Squilla for a report from the Committee on Commerce and Economic Development.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Committee on Commerce and Economic Development reports out two bills with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Mr. Decker, please read your report.
The Committee on Commerce and Economic Development, to which is referred Bill Number 210632, entitled an ordinance amending Chapter 171600 of the Philadelphia Code, entitled Economic Opportunity Plans, by establishing new definitions and clarifying the manner in which credit is given for MWD-SBE participation. And Bill Number 210671, entitled an ordinance amending Title 9 of the Philadelphia Code, entitled Regulation of Businesses, Trades, and Professions, by adding a new chapter requiring certain businesses or professions provide disclosures regarding tangled titles. Respectfully reports that as considered the same, and returns the attached bills to council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Chair again recognizes Councilman Squilla.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended as to permit the first reading this day of bills numbers 210632 and 210671.
Second.
Thank you. It has been moved in properly, second, that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of bills number 210632, 210671. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, ayes have it, and these bills will be placed on our first reading calendar today. That concludes our reports from committee, and our next order of business is consideration of the calendar. I note that the bills just reported from committee with suspension of the rules have been deemed to have had a first reading. These bills will be placed on our second reading and final passage calendar for our next session of council. As there are no additional bills on the first reading calendar today, the chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker for the purpose of calling up bills and resolutions on the final passage calendar today.
Thank you, Mr. President. The following resolutions and bills are being called up from the second reading and final passage calendars today. They are numbers 210848, 210851, 210852, 210853, 210854, 210855, 210857, and 210205. All of the bills and resolutions are being held, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman. Before we proceed with consideration of our public comment session, which is next, we will now take a brief five-to-ten-minute recess to give our technology professionals an opportunity to connect all of our speakers to today's meeting. Thank you very much. We appreciate it. And again, good morning, everyone. Now that everyone is connected to the meeting, and before considering the resolutions and bills we have before us today, we will consider the public comment. The rule is followed. Public comment must concern matters on the second reading and final passage calendar for possible action at a session of council. A speaker on any of those matters must sign up in order to testify. You must call 215-686-3406 by 3:00 p.m. the day before the session to sign up for public comment. When you call, we will take your name, phone number, the number of the legislative item you are commenting on, and whether you are in support of or against the legislation, and add your name to the list. We will telephone each person on the list during the council session and invite them to our remote meeting. Under ideal circumstances, they will each have three minutes to speak. Today, we have ideal circumstances, so you will have three minutes. In order to be fair, though, to all those wishing to speak, I intend to hold faithfully to the established time limit. And once invited to the meeting and you're asked to begin your testimony, a timer will be started, and we will monitor your remaining time throughout your testimony. And when there are 30 seconds remaining, you will be reminded of this. And once your allotted time has passed, you will be asked to conclude your remarks, and shortly thereafter, you will be muted and disconnected from the remote meeting. Also, reserve the right, the limited number of speakers with repetitious comments that are being made on the same subject matter, which could affect callbacks for public comment at the meeting. Also, please be aware that the public meeting is being recorded, and because the meeting is public, participants and viewers have no reasonable expectation of privacy. So by continuing to be in this meeting, you are consenting to being recorded. I really want to thank you today for your willingness and your interest in participating in today's council session. I will now ask, Mr. Decker, please read the first name on the list for our speakers today.
Yes, Mr. President. The first speaker we have today is Queen Judith Robinson, commenting on 210848.
Good morning. I'll state your name for the record and proceed with your testimony.
Good morning, Queen Judith Robinson, speaking on Resolution 210848. What this resolution does not state is that 1610 through 1616 West Page Street is a parking lot, a much-needed parking lot. While it's amazing to watch gentrification, all the things that can happen to constituents who have worked hard and voted for representatives for the past 20 years. This block is one of the first developments where the folks who are seniors have been living there for over 50 years. This parking lot was designated to them since 1964. Now, here come Habitat with their real flowery mission, which, watching it, is real dangerous. They want to take away this parking lot, kind of like with a brain-dead kind of behavior, talking about affordable housing, adding more housing to an area that already has parking problems. So, you know, the mission of Habitat is one we all respect. But this here is adding insult to injury. They already have permit parking on this block. They already have handicap parking. And they're competing with Temple students with this parking lot here. It's truly unfortunate with all of the land in the Fifth District that Habitat, with their mission, would be given a parking lot that's much-used and much-needed to build four more houses on. Those people, homeowners, will bring cars, mostly, I'm sure, and that will add to the problem. It's amazing to watch African-American citizens, seniors at this point, being disrespected, disrespected about something as basic as parking when we know in North Central, especially where Temple University is, there's a much need for parking. It's just, I just want to register that. I just want to know if there are any Habitat donors in the sound of my voice. This is what your dollars are going towards in this regard, on this development, 1600 Block of Page Street, four houses that will bring hell to the senior citizens that live there. I'm going to put a pin in with that because these are my neighbors. These are people I've always advocated for. This is out of order. Last but not least, regarding 210851, I just hope and pray that all this murder and mayhem in the city of Philadelphia, that something will be done, whether you get the money or not. Whether you get the money from the federal government or not, we need to do something about the murders of African-Americans mostly, 400-plus. So with that, I'm just going to leave it alone today. You all have a great one.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Yeah, can I ask you a question, if I may? Quickly, the parking lot in question, and I'm obviously familiar with the lot, is it dedicated parking for anyone in particular, or is it just a public parking space where anybody?
It's dedicated. It's dedicated. It's dedicated. It's a line down the middle, sir, dedicating the parking lot with an arrow for the people on Page Street. However, anybody, everybody uses it. When Election Day, people quickly park there and run into School of Engineering and Science to vote. So although it is dedicated, it was never done legally. You probably know that. It was never put in writing, but there's a line delineating that is for the people with the 1600 Block of Page Street, much-needed, much-needed, even to this day. Okay, because the folks are running in and out to the doctor's appointments. They are jumping up early in the morning. You should hear the stories that were announced at the Redevelopment Authority. These people need the parking because they can't, they're not mobile. So, so yes, it's needed. It's dedicated. It was dedicated to them.
But it's not dedicated legally. I just want to get clarity on it, so we make sure I understand.
Because you did something, I guess, to make it not dedicated any longer. It went back from the land bank to PRA and back and forth, back and forth. I don't know the minutia of it, but I know this. It's a line with an arrow pointing to the 1600 Block of Page Street.
Okay.
Now, you can help them figure it out. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Rachel. We appreciate it. Mr. Decker?
The next speaker is Mary McNatt, commenting on 210848.
Hello, am I on?
Yeah, state your name. Yeah, state your name for the record.
Mary. Mary McNatt. Yes, I do live on the 1600 Block of Page. I've been living here for 51 years now. And aligned to piggyback off of what Ms. Robin was stating, there was a designated area for us where there was a line. Partly line belonged to the Carver School. They opted, because they knew this was coming down the pike, to park in the schoolyard, whereas we on Page Street had enough parking for eight cars. But the parking that was on the opposite, adjacent to that parking on Page Street, Carver has relinquished that right, and Temple has been parking there, or neighborhoods from all over, and full breezes have been parking there. And if I go to the doctors, or I have a neighbor that has a one-year-old son. She just moved here from one of the Habitat houses. If that child grows up, there's going to be no parking around here. So where is that child going to park? You're putting more houses than we need. We're already congested. Okay? I thought maybe it was going to be three houses. And then when you do the building, we've never had rats in this neighborhood. That's a health issue in itself. Now, I'm part of the eight that's disabled. Okay? I can't walk all the way from Norris Street to walk all the way around, like they suggested from the office, to my home. I live in the middle of the block. You're going to inconvenience me again. You did it once before, but yet we had the parking lots where we can cut through because it was a driveway from Page Street onto Norris Street. And now, you're going to end me. I'm afraid to go to the doctors. I have to get up 5:30 in the morning to go shopping for myself. Because if I don't, I'd not move on a Sunday. Because not only that, the church from 17th and Diamond, they park there on Sundays. So I get no relief. It's a constant worry. And I need my car because then you're cutting my mobility, which is cutting my quality of life. How am I to feed myself or get my medication? And then we don't want to talk about when it snows. It's even worse. Now, what's going to happen is it's going to be an all-out war. You have some people that are parking. I'm paying $35 for a parking permit that the city collects on a, they call a non-existing parking lot, but it is because we have two-hour parking there. And now, we're sitting here, and Temple and everybody else is parking there for free. Okay, for two hours. But if they overpark, they leave the tickets on there, and they still be there. And then I'm still stuck.
Okay.
Okay, how much time do I got? Did we hit on the rats? Did we hit on that? Oh, because I've never seen, it's scary. I had one, it's unbelievable. And it's humongous. I'm afraid for my life here. I mean, I never thought I'd get in my old age where I'd be blatantly disregarded and voted all these years. And then now, all of a sudden, I'm just tossed to the side. Oh, I'll play that, wait a minute. And voted all these years, and then now all of a sudden, I'm, I'm just tossed to the side, oh, I'll play that, wait a minute. It's, I've held three jobs for my whole life and tried to be a halfway decent citizen, and this is what you do to elderly people? And it's not only that, if you're doing it to me, the next group to come along, y'all better pay attention because this is not, this is not good. I understand the city needs money, but how about this? How about they take and build the three houses on this grass little piece of land and leave us the parking lot? Or if not that, then leave a parking lot all the way from sixteen oh whatever to sixteen sixteen, all the way across the lot. Make that a parking lot and build houses upward, like, uh, 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 you know, like an apartment building, but have the underground parking. I mean, we're coming up with solutions, so we don't be selfish, but me, I mean, you can't cut us off, are you serious? Oh, so I see when you get older, you don't pay no taxes, they just throw you to the side.
Ms. McNatt?
Okay.
I've got you, um, I'm, I'm actually going to request that this resolution be held today, okay, so further conversation. Um, because I hear you, I obviously know the problem with parking just generally, not only in that area, but actually in the entire city, which is another subject matter, needs to be addressed. Um, so, okay, I got you, thanks, thank you for your testimony, thank you, and we'll be in touch. Mr. Decker, next name?
The next speaker is Gavin Copa, commenting on two one zero eight four eight.
Good morning, Gavin Copa, I'm speaking on, uh, two one zero eight four eight. And, uh, I'm opposed to it, uh, just to go off of what my neighbor said, I do live on the block. Uh, there is not enough room, of course, everybody knows there's a parking problem in Philly. Um, like you, you say you don't own the lot, and they're still taking people. Um, and then, I've, I've lived here for a little bit now, and I'm sitting there one morning and a box truck drives by. And there's trees that overhang the road, and it hits a tree and just rips off the whole left side of the truck. So I don't think a fire truck, an ambulance, anything like that would be able to fit through this road without that parking lot. So if there's a fire on this block, I don't think you'd be able to save any of the houses if that habitat goes up. Um, and yeah, it's just going off of what all my other neighbors said, that's really it.
Okay, all right, well, thank, well, thank you for your testimony, we appreciate it, we're, we're going to, we're going to look into it and we're going to address the matter, thank you.
The next speaker is Antoinette Murphy, commenting on two one zero eight four nine.
Morning.
Good morning.
Just state your name for the record and proceed, thank you.
Antoinette Murphy, uh, to not be redundant, I agree with everyone that has spoken so far in regards to two one zero eight four eight. This is really a community concern in regards to the building of the new construction homes, the uncut lots, the rodents as a health hazard. The parking issues, especially illegally due to the Temple students, the street blockage due to construction, and also. As the gentleman just mentioned, in regards to the tree limbs, you know, license and inspection in regards to, uh, the city itself, you know, the fire happens on that street. It is not going to be acceptable to the neighborhood itself, also resources for the residents with disabilities. So I concur with what everyone has said so far, and we really need to make a change for positivity, especially in our neighborhood itself. But especially on the sixteen hundred block of Page Street, we need to make a positive change and put our residents and neighbors first. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you so much for your testimony.
Uh, we were unable to connect the remaining speaker, Mr. President, so there are no other speakers on the public comment list.
Thank you very much, um, just, Mr. Decker, we, you know, we are going to be getting to that shortly, this for the record, we're going to ask that, uh, two one zero eight four eight be held. Uh, this, uh, for your information, so we'll call that up, we'll make that request. Thank you very much, and thank everyone for their testimony today on our public comment session. Uh, we will now, uh, consider the bills and resolutions on the second reading and final calendar. Mr. Decker, um, as I said earlier, uh, we, we want to ask that resolution number two one zero eight four eight be held today. And you will now proceed to resolution two one zero eight fifty-one.
A resolution urging the U.S. Congress to maintain the proposed five billion dollars in funding for gun violence prevention. And other community violence interventions in the Build Back Better Act.
Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson, full motion.
Yeah, thank you, Council President, before I call for the motion to adopt this resolution, I just want to highlight, um, how critically important that. Um, our congressional delegation support and vigorously fight for the five billion-dollar commitment from President Biden. In the Build Back Better budget, I know all of you have been paying attention to the debate around a reconciliation bill. Which recently has been stripped with the free college, free community college for everyone. Um, as of yesterday, they also, um, stripped, um, paid family leave, and so. Uh, we're just calling on our congressional reps to hold the line and make sure that, um, the five billion that has been committed. So we can have a long-term overall strategy to fight gun violence, not only here in the city of Philadelphia, but also across the state of Pennsylvania, our nation. We know that we didn't get to this state by a, we didn't get to this state by not investing. Uh, in this issue of gun violence, and so the only way we're going to get our, our, our way out of this situation is by investing. And addressing the census issue of gun violence with resources, so I just wanted to put that out there for the record. And Council President, I move the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
Thank you, it's been moved and probably second, that the resolution be adopted, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Go, move, ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted, Mr. Decker, please read the hour, resolution number two one zero eight fifty-two.
A resolution honoring Stephen K. Glasgow, upon the occasion of his retirement as president and chief executive, chief executive officer of Thomas Jefferson University. And congratulating him on his many accomplishments.
Chair recognizes Councilman Dom for a motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Council President, I move for the adoption.
Second.
Second.
It's been moved and second, that the resolution be adopted, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted, Mr. Decker, two one zero eight fifty-three.
A resolution recognizing, honoring, and congratulating champion of the week, student athlete, Danta Scott, on his book Wired Differently, My School Journey. Which helps young student athletes and parents prepare for the recruitment and school selection process.
Thank you, Chair recognizes Councilman Thomas.
Thank you, Council President, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
Thank you, it's been moved and probably second, all in favor of the resolution indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, ayes have it, that resolution is adopted, Mr. Decker, two one zero eight fifty-four.
A resolution honoring counseling and assistance services, Quora, for their semi-centennial and their service to the city of Philadelphia.
Chair recognizes Councilman O'Neil.
Thank you, Mr. President, I move the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
It's been moved and probably second, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted, Mr. Decker, two one zero eight five five.
A resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of twenty-five oh five Emerald Street. Located in the first councilmanic district in accordance with terms of chapter sixteen seven hundred of the Philadelphia Code.
Chair recognizes Councilman Scola, for a motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. President, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
It's been moved and probably second, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted, Mr. Decker, two one zero eight fifty-seven.
A resolution recognizing N E, Northeast Philadelphia Connected, a community-based nonprofit organization. For piloting a catalytic converter theft prevention program in Northeast Philadelphia.
Chair recognizes Councilman O for a motion.
Thank you, Council President, I move for adoption of the resolution.
Second.
It's been moved and probably second, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Both, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted, Mr. Decker, two one zero two oh five.
And ordinance amending chapter nine of subcode P M, the Philadelphia Property Maintenance Code, of title four of the Philadelphia Code. Entitled Additional Special Requirements, to establish a program in which the city may perform certain urgent repairs and bill the property owner.
Thank you, this bill had been read on two different days, the question now, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, please call a roll.
Councilwoman Bass?
Aye.
Councilwoman Brooks?
Aye.
Councilwoman Dobbs?
Councilman Dobbs?
Councilman Dobbs?
Okay, aye. Can you hear me now, aye?
We have you, thank you.
Councilwoman Gartier?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson?
Aye.
Councilman Green?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gimm?
Aye.
Councilman Johnson?
Aye.
Councilman Jones?
Aye.
Councilman O?
Aye.
Councilman O'Neil?
Aye.
Councilwoman Parker?
Aye.
Councilwoman Kenone Sanchez?
Aye.
Councilman Scola?
I play the most.
Aye.
Councilman Thomas?
Aye.
Council President Clark?
Aye, the ayes are sixteen and nays are zero, uh, majority of members present voting affirmative, the bill passes. Mr. Decker, you have any additional resolution?
I do, Mr. President, a resolution authorizing the Committee on Global Opportunities and Creative Innovative Economy. To hold hearings to receive the report of the Arts and Culture Task Force formed by the committee. To learn about its findings and the actions taken thus, thus far taken. And to review the impact of this work on the vital arts and culture sector in the city of Philadelphia, introduced by Councilman Thomas.
Chair recognizes Councilman Thomas.
Thank you, Council President, I move for the adoption of the resolution, and I also want to thank the Arts and Culture Task Force for the great work they've done, and we're looking forward to the findings.
Second.
It's been moved and probably second, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
There are no other resolutions on the final passage calendar, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Mr. Decker. We will proceed to our speeches. Now that we have concluded our calendar for today, and prior to recognizing members regarding speeches, I will note for the record. At this time, that we will use the chat feature available on Microsoft's team to allow members to signify that they wish to be recognized. In order to comply with the Sunshine Act, the chat feature must only be used for this particular purpose. With that said, uh, speeches on behalf of the minority, Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you very much, Council President, um, last, uh, council session, I talked about a very disturbing. Um, situation, and that, that is about nine mothers and their children who are being literally shot at. Um, their homes shot at, uh, their children shot at. And I posted a picture on, uh, Facebook and social media of a lamp hole, a steel lamp hole outside of one mother's home that had a bullet hole in it. Um, and, uh, the short of it is that there seems to be some situation where. Uh, there's a gap or, uh, or, um, a, a inability to accommodate. Um, these mothers who have been, um, subject to this for quite a period of time. They, um, are the mothers of children who have cooperated with law enforcement. Uh, sometimes because they are themselves being investigated, um, and their children have been, uh, hurt. Um, and, um, in this particular case, the fourteen-year-old daughter has been shot at. Uh, the nine-year-old boy has been, um, you know, traumatized, and, 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 and so. They, um, being the mothers of, um, uh, the, the witnesses and those that cooperate. Are being attacked by very young people, um, thirteen, fourteen-year-olds. Um, and that makes it very difficult, um, for them, they need to be relocated, that's the, kind of the fundamental problem here. Uh, it is something that they have tried to do, just been a failure on the part of our current system. Uh, there's no resources for them, or if there are some kind of resources, it does not, uh, end up with them being able to be relocated. Um, today is, it's a week later, uh, I spoke with Sheriff, um, Rochelle Bilau, who agreed. That she would create a, a protective services and relocation unit in her office, which seems to be. The most immediate and appropriate way to deal with people that fall through the cracks, but yet are actually being targeted with deadly violence. And for that reason, I will, uh, um, ask, uh, our council to step up. As council often does, and take action, that action.
Do you have a point of information?
Yes.
Chair, we're going to have, Councilman O. Point of information.
Yeah, just, just a point of information, um, Councilman O, and this, obviously, this is an issue that, um, very near and dear to my heart, as well as Councilman, um, Curtis Jones, I just want to. Um, add some additional information, have you been in contact with our, um, District Attorney's Office? Have you also been in contact with social service organizations that receive reallocation funding such as AMIR, which is Every Murder is Real? And also I'm going to ask for, to Chair of Public Safety, I know he did hearings in the past regarding this very same issue. To also perhaps provide a brief insight as to, uh, where we're at in terms of this particular issue, because, um, Councilman, I do clearly. Agree with you that when individuals come forward, um, to help stop homicides. And put themselves on the line, we always say, if you see something, say something, if you know something, say something. And if you have non-families that aren't protected, then we should be doing everything possible to make sure that they are protected, and so I just want to ask you those, um, particular questions.
Yes, and I thank you for that, um, I did speak to the mothers, I will say, they are extremely nervous. Um, scared, frightened, um, crying, very difficult, it takes a, a very long time for me to actually engage with them. Unfortunately, yes, they, they have tried, um, and, and some of them believe that they were promised relocation. That has not worked out for a number of reasons, and, um, just because I was not personally there. I don't want to say things that are hearsay, um, things that I may not, you know, completely understand, I like to do due diligence, but there is a failing, but yes, they have. Communicated with the police, they have communicated with, um, uh, the, the social services entities, not AMIR, for example, specifically. They have worked with different community activists, community groups, uh, they have dealt with the District Attorney's Office, um, they feel very much let down. Um, they're very suspicious of media and politicians like myself, very understandably. Um, but I would like to, uh, uh, speak, uh, speak with both you, um, as the, the head of the Gun Violence Task Force. And, and Councilman Jones is head of, uh, Public Safety, just to brief you, you know, kind of confidentially, I, I will be speaking with, uh. Requested a meeting with our Council President and with our Appropriations Chair on this topic. What people are saying to me is they have to be moved yesterday. If we can move one or two, the others will come forward, you know, obviously, we need a, a process to make sure that there aren't any false claims, due diligence, those type of things. But the most immediate thing, and I will say, having served in the District Attorney's Office of Philadelphia, and having done criminal defense for about twenty years. As part of what I did as an attorney, uh, I am familiar with relocation protective services, both at the federal, state, and municipal level. There is a gap here that needs to be filled, and so, um, I'm bringing it to your attention that, uh, I will. Move forward on a topic that is, um, something that is very important to many of you, um, and, uh. I think that we can solve this problem, uh, by, by moving this mother and her two children immediately, thank you very much, Council President.
Thank you, uh, you all will connect, thank you all very much, and thank you all for your continued good work. Uh, Chair recognizes Councilwoman Brooks.
Thank you, Council President, um, I want to, uh, briefly remind my colleagues interviewing public. That my office will be hosting a hearing tomorrow at nine A.M. that my office will be hosting a hearing tomorrow at nine a.m. that will identify barriers and solutions to preserving community gardens and open spaces in Philadelphia. As the climate crisis worsens and our seasonal temperatures become more extreme, a lack of tree coverage means hotter summers and communities that are more susceptible to flooding. And communities like mine, where gun violence crisis has torn families and neighborhoods apart, community gardens offers spaces for young people to get their hand dirty, connect with employment opportunities, and create authentic relationships. These spaces foster intergenerational community and increase access to food, fresh food, and to beautify our city. Some of my team has spent a few days visiting grassroots, community-run gardens across the city. And I could say firsthand, the work that these neighborhood spaces do is nothing short of transformative. Agenda-ification accelerates across our city, and predatory development displaces long-term residents. Protecting community gardens isn't just a matter of value of gardens themselves. It's about protecting the integrity, diversity, and character of our neighborhoods, which in my opinion is what makes Philadelphia one of the greatest cities in the world. I deeply appreciate the work that many of my senior colleagues have been doing for years to protect community gardens and open spaces from share sales. We need an all-hands-on-deck collaborative approach to find long-term solutions and preserve these spaces for generations to come. So thank you, Council President, and thank you to my colleagues for their support, and I hope to see you in the hearing tomorrow to get this work done. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Speeches on behalf of the minority, Chair recognizes Councilman Green.
Thank you, Council President. I just want to remind those that Tuesday is Election Day. There's no off-year elections. Every election is important. We sacrifice quite a bit for the right to vote. On Tuesday, the election, we have some very important races from the Supreme Court, Superior Court, Commonwealth Court, Court of Common Pleas, retention judges, as well as our county officials, both District Attorney and City Controller. We also have some ballot questions on the ballot, and I want to talk about one ballot question in particular, the Housing Trust Fund. Now, this is a question that's been supported by the community, in particular, the Philadelphia Coalition for Affordable Communities. And I want to thank Nora Lictash and Women's Community Revitalization Project, as well as Rick Sauer and Andy Toy, China Philadelphia Association of CDCs, and Tom Earl and Antisalandra from Liberty Resources for their support of this ballot question. Also, I'd like to thank all of my colleagues for supporting this ballot question seventeen zero on June twenty-sixth. And also, the mayor signed this bill on August twenty-sixth. So I was somewhat surprised when the Enquirer stated they support the Housing Trust Fund and its programs, but was against this ballot question. And I'm surprised because they stated that this question would bind the hands of future mayors and future councils, but this legislation was specifically drafted to not do that and have our finance director, Vegas State, if we have a financial challenge, why we would not be able to do a housing trust fund allocation in that year. So I was somewhat surprised that they would take that position. And especially now, as our region is inching toward a post-COVID normal. But even when normalcy returns, the sigh of relief is not coming for tens of thousands of Philadelphians, many of them who have lost their jobs, may lose their homes, and most importantly, have lost loved ones due to COVID nineteen. The same residents, including many seniors and people with disabilities, have endured threats to their health and well-being, and significant financial losses will soon face more risks, as this year's budget includes minimal resources from the City's General Fund for the creation and preservation of affordable housing through the Housing Trust Fund, which is responsible for financing programs that aid at-risk renters, providing grants to make home repairs or accessibility improvements for residents with disabilities, and supporting the creation and preservation of affordable homes. Unfortunately, Philadelphia, a city with one of the highest poverty rates and population of people with disabilities, remains one of the only major cities in the country prioritized, excuse me, prioritized, on affordable housing to an annual mandated general fund budget appropriation. For example, Washington D.C. has made a commitment to provide a minimum of a hundred million to their housing trust fund. Although Philadelphia does have a dedicated sort of housing trust fund dollars, our real estate transfer recording fees, this source amounts to, someone say, a paltry nine to fourteen million dollars per year. Not nearly enough to meet the growing need for all the more in housing than they can afford. Philadelphia needs a mandatory commitment from the City's General Fund for the Housing Trust Fund to prevent this fine communities where the affordability gap is growing. And these areas are skyrocketing. Incomes have fallen, and affordable, accessible homes are becoming out of reach for far too many Philadelphians. The question on the November second ballot places this funding opportunity in the hands of voters, and would amend the City's Home Real Charter to implement a mandatory annual appropriation of at least point five percent of the general fund to the housing trust fund. A yes vote would ensure the urgent affordable housing needs in our city are met. This would translate to twenty-six million dollars next fiscal year for the housing trust fund based on our five-point-two because as a city, we are losing ground, and that comes at a high cost. Half of all renters and nearly one out of every three homeowners are cost burdened, meaning they do not have enough money left to cover the basic needs after paying their housing costs. A poll by a Pew Travel Trust showed that one in four families have fallen behind in rent and mortgage payments. When renters are unable to pay what they owe, it leads to evictions increases and increases homelessness, especially for renters of color. Seventy-five percent of Latinx residents and fifty-five percent of Black residents reported struggling to pay their bills, and in northwest and south Philadelphia, displacement from rising housing costs has pushed out more than thirty-two percent of Black community residents. These numbers are devastating, but it's not too late to make a difference. Supporting the Housing Trust Fund referendum, ballot question number four will bring tens of thousands of our community members one step closer to securing safe, accessible, and affordable housing, and I strongly encourage Philadelphian voters to vote yes and make a strong statement that funding affordable housing should be a priority. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson. Thank you very much, Council President. While I just wanted to first acknowledge Councilman Jones's bill that will allow LNI to go in and address issues of concerns in large apartment facilities where landlords aren't doing their due diligence as related to the upkeeping and maintenance of those facilities. And so, Councilman Jones, good job on your work, because I get calls on a day-to-day basis of bad actors, and the tenants have to figure out a way how to live in humane conditions when individuals aren't being responsible. So I wanted to acknowledge that. I'm also, as Chair of Transportation, for the last several terms, Councilman Jones and myself have been being neutral mediators between SEPTA and the transportation workers. And I'm one to advocate to make sure that those SEPTA workers who worked through this pandemic are essential workers. They have worked day in and day out when our city was shut down, putting their lives on the line from a healthcare standpoint, but also have to deal with the issues of homelessness within the SEPTA system, as well as the issue of violence. And so, hopefully, the current negotiations are done in a fair, productive manner that will prevent a strike. We don't need a strike right now here in the city of Philadelphia, because it will significantly impact not only future events coming up such as Election Day, but most importantly, our children, those sixty thousand young people who go to school, those sixty thousand families who depend on our public transportation system to get their children to and from school. And so, I come from a union household, and so I understand the importance of going on strike when management aren't negotiating in good faith, but I'm hopefully hopeful that in this particular case, as we move forward, a strike will be prevented, the workers will be supported. And also, I call on our state legislator and those in the federal government to provide the additional funding to support SEPTA from an infrastructure standpoint and operational standpoint as we move forward. Being a former member of the state legislator, working with our current Majority Leader Sherrell Parker, when she was the delegation chair, we work to make sure we pass the gas tax to support SEPTA, so they can have the operational resource that they can use to utilize to support not only operations, but most importantly, support our workers. And so, from my understanding, there isn't a proposal of support in Harrisburg as of today, but nevertheless, I just want to put our state friends on notice on a state level, as well as on a federal level, who's negotiating this current Budget Reconciliation Act, and not only focusing on the infrastructure support, but also operational support, that a lot of management can do their part, but most importantly, support those workers that go to and from work day in and day out, on the front line, and those are our SEPTA workers. And so I just want to put that out there for the record. I thank my colleague Councilman Curtis Jones. He's been on the phone day in and day out around this issue, just trying to make sure again, that we do prevent a strike, but most importantly, support those workers. And also, I want to acknowledge Councilwoman Kathleen Gilmore Richardson, who also penned a letter with myself, signed by colleagues, to make sure we're advocating for paternity care. You know, I'm a dad with two toddlers, so I totally understand the importance of paternity care. And so, let's continue to support this negotiation process in a fair manner, so we do not have a strike that will impact our region. Thank you very much, Council President. Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to first thank Member O for taking on the issue of relocation. Without witnesses, there is no justice. Without people that come forward, we can't get the convictions on those who are plaguing our neighborhoods with violence. So my office will be reaching out to you and Member Johnson to talk about a couple of things. One, the fact of whether or not the resources exist to do proper relocation of witnesses. I think if we coordinate with HUD, coordinate with the Philadelphia Housing Authority, coordinate with the City of Philadelphia, we can provide reasonable accommodations for witnesses. I recall, a couple of years back, a witness was relocated in one of the strangest hotels, Mr. President, right across the street. It was supposed to be hidden. Everybody, it was the worst-kept secret in Philadelphia. This young lady who witnessed the murder came out, because she had a bad habit of smoking, came outside to puff outside of the hotel, and right down the street at CJC, she saw the accused going in to CJC for another case. They made eye contact. She just lost her nerve and ran for her life. We have to do better. If we're asking people to see something, say something, we have to be there for them. So we'll reach out to you. Thank you, Councilman O, for focusing on that. And Member Johnson and I will be right there with you. What I'd also like to talk about very briefly, Mr. President, is Bill two-one-zero-two-oh-five, which is the Urgent Repairs Program. I worked with LNI, PHDC. I think it's, and thank you, Mr. President, during those long budget negotiations that you were very patient with all of us for. It was one of the things that we agreed with the administration that once upon this passage, we had a year, because there's a year before this is actually implemented, that we would work out the details of where some of the resources would come from to make these repairs. But let me tell you the why. Whether you talk about big buildings like the Pavilion, that are at over two hundred units, they lost their electric during the high point of the heat of the summer. They were working off of a backup generator anyway. There was about thirteen floors, former, well, before he was a representative, Almond Brown, and one of my staff went around it because the electric went off, which meant the elevators didn't work. There were seniors, born walkers, attempting to get out of the fire exits, coming downstairs, using the light from their flashlights of their cell phones. This is unacceptable. When we look at places like that, that also don't do the needed repairs, LNI comes in as they should and says, without these sprinkler systems, without these generators, we're going to have to close you down. That's over two hundred citizens of Philadelphia that wind up homeless. Some of them get relocated with family, but others of them wind up in our emergency shelter systems. So whether you're talking about big units like that, Mr. President, or small units, single homes on neighborhood blocks, where we saw a lady in a neighborhood tour sitting on the porch sunbathing, and you could see next door that the ceiling from the porch had separated, that water had gotten through it, that rodents, such as possums and raccoon, at night ran up and down that habitat. And her property was being damaged because a derelict property owner would not make those repairs. But with this bill, LNI can come and make those repairs. LNI will be able to remove those dreaded weed trees. You know what I'm talking about. That seem to grow impervious through walls into other people's ceilings and roofs that we can now kind of take a look at in a pilot way, and then in an expanded way, to repair. Cities like New York, Washington D.C., Los Angeles, do not play with these kinds of conditions. They make repairs, they make liens, they make speculators that come into our neighborhoods, buy properties, don't put money in them, and then wait for the market to catch up so they can get windfall profits. Well, when you go to that settlement table, we hope to be there to get our repair money back. So I thank you, Mr. President, for this being one of the things you helped shepherd through in the budget negotiations that no one sees, but we see way on you. So I want to thank you for the delayed gratification of this bill. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman. I believe that concludes the speeches on behalf of the minority and majority. So with that, Chair recognizes Councilman Jones for motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that council stand adjourned until Thursday, November fourth, twenty-twenty-one, at ten a.m.
Following second.
Thank you. It's been moved and probably second that council stand adjourned until Thursday, November fourth, twenty-twenty-one. Today, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Motion carries. Thank you all very much, and please continue to be safe. Thank you.